All right.
All right.
Little bit of an echo, but we'll survive. I'm gonna call this meeting to order the North Andover School Committee for April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. We are in regular session now, and then this meeting is being recorded, and there's a large echo. Okay, our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I have some preliminary matters to go over first. First of all, this is David Terrissi. I'm the Chair of the North Andover School Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So, members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. And then, staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. And then, our anticipated speakers, which I believe are three students, are on the call as well. So, first of all, Vice Chair Helen Picard, are you there?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy Mabley, are you there?
I am here. I am here.
Holly, are you there? And Andrew? I've lost their voices.
I'm here. I'm here.
We can all hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm joined by Superintendent Greg Gilligan here today. Marcy Bukusi, are you there on the line?
I am here.
I'm having a tough time hearing them, Brian, if you could put them up. Our anticipated speakers tonight, Jack, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Mika?
Yes.
And Aman? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this open meeting of the North Andover School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment, and folks have sent me public comment that I will read at the appropriate time. For this meeting, the North Andover School Committee is convening by phone, as well as video conference, as posted on the town's website. Okay, we are now gonna turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your, please hold your comments till your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please wait till I recognize you or yield the floor to you before you speak, and please state your name, to be clear. Okay, I will do the public comment. And finally, each vote taken tonight will be conducted by a roll-call vote, so we will not have any, any voice votes. Okay, those are the ground rules going forward. So, the first order of business is public comment, and I am in receipt of a couple of public comments that was submitted prior to tonight's meeting. Okay, the first public comment is from Valerie Andren, thirty-four Rosemont. Hello, I would like to take this opportunity to submit public comment for Thursday's school committee meeting. First, I realize these are unprecedented times we are going through. There is no blueprint for success, and we are all trying to make the best of a challenging situation. I applaud the administration's focus and dedication to ensuring that our children's social and emotional well-being remains at the forefront of this new environment we are living in. While we wait for guidance from the state DOE, it is a concern of mine that while North Andover Public Schools has recognized the tremendous emotional impact of COVID-nineteen on our children, that the state will forge ahead with an aggressive educational transition into the two thousand and twenty-one school year to make up for lost time, and that our children's emotional needs to get reacclaimed into a school setting after such an abrupt ending will be discarded to meet academic standards and goals. I recognize there is an exceptional amount of planning going on within the district for what a two thousand and twenty-year, two thousand and twenty-one-year may look like, and many scenarios need to be considered. I hope that the emotional and social needs of our children continues to be a priority piece of the conversation. We will struggle to see academic success if we cannot develop a quote-unquote "return-to-school" program that prioritizes our children's emotional health. For those of us, for those of us with children transitioning into a new school next year, I hope that additional support, communication, and visits to the new school can be made available over the summer to help ease what will be an even greater challenge without the traditional, without the traditional send-off enclosure from their current school. I thank the committee for their time and consideration for this important topic. Thank you, Valerie Andren. Excuse me. I have another public comment from Jennifer Rivers, Carterfield Road. Hello, I am a parent of one student from the graduating class of two thousand and twenty. After delayed and a lack of communication from the North Andover High School regarding graduation celebrations, I started a Facebook group to celebrate accomplishments by our students. This group has been embraced by everyone in our community with the exception of the school administration. While Principal Jackson is recognized as an engaged leader and a person that really has the kids' best interests at heart, it is disheartening to receive an email stating that North Andover High School will not assist with our Adopters' Seniors Recognition Program and requests that all participants be informed of any action is not endorsed by North Andover High School. Correspondents identified that this campaign could not ensure that it would be all-inclusive, however, no assistance was offered to assist with reaching hundred percent of the student body. Certainly, there are legal barriers, although we believe a more cooperative approach could have delivered favorable results and meet North Andover Schools' Raise, Pledge motto, where the "I" stands for inclusion. This campaign is to honor our seniors, is being embraced not only by parents of soon-to-be graduates, but also being supported by local businesses, residents without graduate, residents without graduates, and town officials. Simply stated, we have not asked for sharing of confidential information and only requested for North Andover High School Administration to generate an email to all seniors announcing how North Andover Community wishes to offer recognition. Instead, and to date, we have relied on last year's junior yearbook and sharing of contacts. Adopt Our Seniors program is being celebrated across the U.S., and a local example is Waltham High School, which was an idea presented by an eleventh-grade student and recognized on a local newscast praising her efforts. There are twenty-five-plus Google articles from towns across this country where schools have embraced the idea of celebrating twelve years of schoolwork through Adopt Our Seniors campaign. The community of North Andover responded enthusiastically. In less than seventy-two hours, there are enough families, individuals, and businesses to cover all students nearly twice. Our only lack of support is from the North Andover School District, and what has become a question again of where is the "I" in "raise"? We ask our children to live raised values, and here is a moment to live our teachings and embrace our program. Local merchant support continues to show interest, and nearly a dozen thus far have reached out in support. And to name a few, AFC North Andover has donated poster boards, J&amp;E Subs, Mad Maggie's, along with Rosen Dove and others, are offering significant discounts to reduce expense for adopting families, which elect to offer a keepsake or creating a special memory for two thousand and twenty. And not to mention, North Andover businesses could use a little economic stimulus from residents, a win-win situation for all. We should all be proud to live in North Andover, where our community recognizes a need to support our graduating class of two thousand and twenty. Certainly, saving our seniors has good intentions, and we look forward to learning of their program to exhaust nearly seventeen thousand dollars in student and family contributions. However, seniors are anxious in these unprecedented times, and our mission is to get them excited now, and we have to be a hundred, a hundred percent inclusive. Hence, our request this evening is to garner support from North Andover High School by distributing an announcement and introducing our Adopt Our Seniors program. We appreciate you hearing this request this evening, and thank each of you for allocating time to learn of our mission and recognize the North Andover Senior Class of two thousand and twenty. That was from Jennifer Rivers, so thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Valerie, for your, your public comment. I'm sure we'll address some of those issues a little later on in the superintendent's report. Okay, thank you for your patience there. And just on cue, we're joined by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Jim Mealy. Hello, Jim.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thanks.
We just finished public comment, and our next order of business tonight is student report. Jack, I will defer to you, because you are the senior, and it's good to see all three of you, first of all. How are y'all doing?
Doing well, thank you. How are you?
Good thanks, Jack. Go ahead.
So, obviously, these last few weeks have been very difficult as a student, no matter what. But we're gonna, we wanna start our report tonight with some events from before any of this happened, with school cancellations. So, we're gonna go back to the day of the first school closure, which was Mr. North Andover. So, as you guys all probably know, Mr. North Andover is an event supported by SOS and that committee to raise money, to benefit the SOS party at the end of the year that traditionally happens. But due to COVID-nineteen, the performance had to be canceled and held without an audience. So, on that Friday night, the contestants and their sponsors, as well as any extras, were allowed to film a full-length show that I believe will be released. It was filmed by Cam, and it should be released promptly, because the hope originally was to be able to do it in June, should school open up again, but obviously, that's not the case. So, be on the lookout for the Mr. North Andover Show recording. I'm gonna turn it over to Mika briefly.
Yes, so, a few weeks ago, we did introduce and begin remote learning. And we've, the three of us, as well as the rest of the student body, has had a few weeks to adjust to that. It's certainly very different using video calls and relying on Google Classroom and such. I know for me personally, I've done a mix of both calls and online assignments. Jack and Aman touched upon their experiences a little bit as well. And we are very appreciative of all the faculty for giving everything they can to create a sense of normalcy during this time. But we do, definitely, all our classmates and being in the classroom with their teachers and peers. So, I don't know if Aman and Jack, either of them, wanna speak a little bit about their experience so far.
Yeah, I definitely would agree with Mika. We are all very appreciative, because a lot of the teachers have been very quick to respond. And as soon as it became apparent we weren't going back, they shifted their focus over to remote learning. And I know that, at the start, it was definitely a bit awkward, trying to figure out how to work with technology for some of our teachers, but it's definitely become easier, and it's become somewhat normal now, which is a good thing. Though I know some students have been a little bit annoyed at the slower pace of learning and the less structured days, but, you know, it's the best that we can do for the circumstances. Uh, Jack, do you have anything to add?
I agree with everything that Aman and Mika just said. I think also, just mentioning that we did the entire trimester three transition remotely, which transitioning to a new trimester remotely was certainly an interesting experience, like meeting some teachers that I've never had before in four years of high school through Google Classroom on the first day of school was an interesting experience. But I would say, I agree with what Mika and Aman have said. It's been going smoothly as it can be for the most part.
And then, just to touch upon the lack of a sport season, I know that many teams have been trying to adapt, and like, fall sports teams have been giving their schedules, routines, distributing those two players on the teams in order to get started now. Because while there is no spring season, there's definitely a lot of time, a lot of free time for students to begin preparing for that fall sport. So, they're definitely working towards getting ready for that activity, whatever it may be. Uh, Mika?
Yeah, so, some of the, as well as sports, obviously, there aren't any more clubs and extracurriculars now that we are not in school. But for Student Council, they've been creating every week different virtual events and giving students something to do and giving a sense of community during this time. Additionally, they, some students from North Andover High School have been able to participate in a Massachusetts Association of Student Council created a video project, and where students could submit different essential workers and such that they were thankful for during this time. And that video will be released soon as well.
Let's go to the committee members. First of all, thank you all for joining us today. Let me see if the committee has questions or comments for you. So, Amy, do you have any questions or comments for the students?
Thank you all for being here. It's so great to see you again, just seeing you all. I think, I won't steal your Mr. McDavitt, so I know Mr. McDavitt has the same question I do.
You can ask.
So, we just wanna hear a little bit from you back about your, I am as well, on the committee about planning for, to give the best opportunity for some graduation, exposure for all of you. And talk a little bit about that, from your perspective.
Right, right. So, from the very first day that school was canceled, myself, other class officers, and class advisors have been meeting and coordinating plans based on various situations and scenarios that could have played out. Because when school was canceled on March thirteenth, we had absolutely no idea what, whether we would be back on. First, I think it was March twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, then it was like April fourth, then it was May fourth, and the dates just kept moving on us, and so we met a lot of times to compensate for the different date changes. And once school was canceled for the remainder of the school year, a few weeks ago, we met with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Young, the principal and assistant principal, to advocate for the fact that the class of two thousand and twenty deserves to have celebrations, deserves some kind of graduation regardless of what it may be, and just deserves closure, because that's important. When we were abruptly, we left school on March thirteenth with no knowledge that that was our last day of high school. So, basically, what we did after our very first meeting with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Young, we decided it was most important to us to get feedback from the entire senior class through a Google form that was sent in a mass email to everybody and posted on our social media and publicized, and it had a very good turnout with about seventy percent of seniors participating in that survey to give us feedback, which was very helpful in our planning over the next few weeks. So, we, through that survey, when the results came back, we met with Mr. Jackson, Mr. Young, Ms. Bentley, Ms. McDonald, who are the senior class advisors, as well as the senior class officers, to look it over and see what's important to the seniors at this time. It asked questions like, which of the following dates would you be available for a graduation celebration? Which included a list of four potential weekends over the summer, one of which included the original date, June fifth or sixth. It also asked questions about which people would prefer, as well as other questions about which parts of the ceremony are most important to each student, in terms of you could select which things were most important to you. One option was being with your classmates, another was walking cross-stage, being handed your diploma, hearing your name. We went through the entire graduation ceremony and all the pieces, figure out what we wanted, prioritize and including. Out of those things that students told us that were most important to them for a graduation ceremony, being with classmates was the number one thing. And that, coincidentally, is also the hardest thing at this time, which is very unfortunate. And we knew that that would be the most requested thing. There was no doubting that. That was my first box that I checked when I filled out the survey as well. And so, in addition to being with classmates, walking cross-stage, being handed your diploma, hearing your name, being read, and having immediate family present, were the next list of things, as well as being at North Andover High School. These are the next list of things that were, that were submitted as being important by the results of the survey. So, when we met with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Young, we made sure to try and develop a plan that would best include all of those elements, with the one exception being, being with classmates, because as of right now, the stay-at-home order has been moved back again to May eighteenth. So, at this point in time, there's no knowing whether we will be able to be with classmates physically on June fifth or sixth, and seems very unlikely. So, we developed the plan, where basically, over the course of seven to ten school days, or there are no school days, but days, in late May, there will be appointments that seniors will set up with, there will be more surveys and emails coming out. And seniors will arrive at North Andover High School in their cap and gown with their immediate family. They will enter through the gym doors, and they'll be greeted by faculty members that will explain to them like what they're about to do and go through. They'll also, when they receive their cap and gown, we haven't figured out whether or not that will be before the ceremony or at the ceremony, because it depends when they come in. But we are working to make sure that it can be before, if possible, because that's obviously most convenient for people. And then, what's gonna happen is, class officers will be there, and we'll call the students' name on the stage into the podium as a normal ceremony. The students will walk across the stage with their family there to support them. Mr. Jackson will either, or a member of the school committee, will either hand the student their diploma, or it'll be placed on a table, whatever the regulations state would be best at that time. And then, students will have the opportunity to take photos with their family members in front of the stage or outside, if they please. We'll have a professional photographer, as well as NA-Cam present. And then, NA-Cam will be filming each of these individual graduations, and then compile it into a large, larger graduation ceremony that will be released at six o'clock on the night of June fifth and broadcasted through NA-Cam. And it will also include things like speeches from myself, as well as the valedictorian, salutatorian, Dr. Gilligan and Mr. Jackson are the speakers. And we also felt it was important to make sure that the seniors and band and chorus have a proper acknowledgement during this ceremony, so there will be a component of the band and chorus, as well as acknowledging the members of the senior class that are going off to the military, because every single year, we acknowledge those students by having them stand. They have their ropes at graduation. So, this year, those students will be honored during the National Anthem. And that is the plan that was recently released by Mr. Jackson. Also, we proposed it to the subcommittee of about thirty people yesterday, and we have helped from the youth center, as well as the police and the school committee, high members, as well as SOS and the Parent Advisory Council. There were, and teachers and parents of seniors are on that committee to help support us. So, I think that's everything. Does anyone have any questions? Because that is a long list of information.
Yes, yes. Mr. McDavitt.
You know I would, right? So, I'm really glad to hear that there were a number of students that were involved, you know, with this, and certainly, you know, the class officers, you know, are a part of that, and it's part of the reason why your classmates have kind of put you in a position to do this. So, I'm just curious, you know, when you sent the survey out, what I've heard is that, you know, it really only included dates in June. And I'm wondering if you can tell us why perhaps you didn't have additional dates in the July timeframe?
So, the survey actually, that's not correct. The survey contained the dates where June fifth or sixth was under one box. The second box was July twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. The third box was August first or second, and then the final box was August seventh or eighth. So, there were dates that were put on the survey that were in July and August. And then, out in those dates, the, we asked again what students, when students were available, and when they preferred. For availability, ninety-eight percent of seniors are available on June fifth and sixth. And forty-nine percent chose that as their preferred date. The next highest preferred date was July twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, with only twenty-seven percent. And lower, a lower amount of students would be physically able to attend in July. So, there were other options for later in the summer on this.
Okay, okay. Great, great. Thank you for clarifying that. I wonder if you could just tell me, Jack, and I know you're, you're about to graduate, so it's a little bit of a, you know, catch twenty-two here, but how empowered do you feel the students were at making the decision here? And I will sign your diploma regardless of when. But I am just curious if you feel like you were led to a decision, or you feel that the students had a very very much an active seat at the table in the conversations that were here. Recognizing that we have borne a health and stake guidance, so to abide by.
Yeah, I honestly think that our involvement as students was huge in the planning. I think that the administration and our advisors completely respected the fact that we are the seniors that are, this is affecting, this is our graduation, and they respected that. And I really do think that they took our voice into consideration when we were making these events. We met with only the class officers, without any adults present, and went through the survey results together for three hours. And we kind of compiled what we thought was a good proposal that we brought to our meeting, our first meeting with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Young and our class advisors. The one thing that we did not want was a one-hundred percent virtual graduation. We didn't think that that would properly celebrate the seniors, in all honesty. We didn't think that that would be a fair celebration. So, that was the main thing that we voiced. Obviously, we don't want this graduation necessarily more than a traditional graduation at all. I would much rather the traditional graduation. And I think this is the closest thing that we could get to that, but I would say I'm happy with the, our participation and that we've, I think we've been heard in making the decision.
Okay, and then, I think this may be my last question, but I read the letter correctly. There was, mentioned a possible formal event. So, maybe prom, maybe called something else, like we're not a quarantine, perhaps. I don't know what we might call it. But, you know, something where, you know, the class can certainly gather and dress up and be nice and, you know, do all of this. Is that something that you feel the members of the class, even though they will have graduated at that point, you know, it may be a month, month and a half after graduation, are still interested in? As, I hate to say, a little bit of a rite of passage, but basically, is that?
Yeah, I definitely think that seniors are still interested in any events that we can plan, whether they're a month and a half out or not, especially given that everyone's been cooped up for the last two months already, and everyone, we never got the chance to really say goodbye and really be together as a class one last time. So, planning those events in July, our reason is because the number one thing that people said in our survey was being with classmates is the most important thing. Obviously, that isn't possible on June fifth, but we think it might be possible on July twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. So, we've gone ahead and booked Danrusport Yacht Club for a senior prom-like event on Saturday, July twenty-fifth. And I definitely think people are going to still participate, just to be together one last time as a class.
Okay, and I, of course, have one more. So, one of the other things that, you know, is very common is the um is the signing of yearbooks and, you know, being able to, you know, get um, you know, notes from teachers and, you know, and anybody that, you know, whether they're upperclassmen, lowerclassmen, and I realize that lowerclassmen um, you know, may be more difficult to get. But is that something that is on your calendar of proposed events? Is that anywhere on the radar? I didn't, if it's in the letter, I missed it and I do apologize.
That is actually not in the letter, so I'm glad you brought it up. So we can talk about that now. Um there is a another event. Um so prom is going to be July twenty-fifth and then we've scheduled a like informal casual event um on July twenty-fourth, the day before. So our goal would be for that day to serve as like uh have your books be signed and um to be together in a more casual way. So hopefully people don't have to like bring their yearbook to prom. Um but that will be an option at that event that we've set up.
It's a great dress accessory.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. This is kind of a card. First of all, thank you. That was a lot of information. Um I don't have access to the letter as soon as I went up to ask high school parents only. Um but I would say that I'm sorry, I'm sorry?
You have a, you'll get a copy of your school committee email.
Not that I see, but I see, but but I but I will believe you. Um so I'm really thankful for all the information that you provided. One of my questions I have between the um prom formal event or whatever it's gonna be. Um and then the July twenty-fourth informal event, um is either or both of those going to be um free? Or in any way subsidized so that there's full participation possible? Um so I'll let you answer that and then I may have another.
Yeah, so the July twenty-fourth event, um we were treated as an event that would have been covered by the class dues as usual. Um for senior week activities that we had scheduled to do that money that we were planning to use for that that um is being reallocated to that event. Um as well as the SOS committee has said that they would be happy to help support that event. Um so that is what their role might look like in the informal event. And then for the um prom event or the formal event on Saturday, July um we have discussed the fact that we are hoping to offer um to include that in senior dues if possible, depending on whether it comes down to whether or not we get deposits back from places that we um had booked for senior week, the first week of June. So it was um Kimball Farms and Lucky Strike Bowling. So if they send us our deposits back, which we show to them and express the rest we feel we deserve, um our deposits back that um then then that event will hopefully be covered by that price. And if not, we'll look into other options to at least make it as accessible and um maybe potentially subsidized because we do want maximum turnout and we want, we don't want um finances to be an issue in people going to that. Like we're completely committed to making sure that um anybody who wants to go is able to go.
I think that's wonderful and I I'm certainly not trying to say that this is all student responsibility, but you just are informed and involved and so I'm asking my questions to you in front of me. Um if if there were the unfortunate situation that the July events were canceled, has there been a conversation about what might happen with your dues?
Yes, yes. Um I've the the email that or the Google Doc that um Mr. Jackson sent out outlines that if there are additional funds, even if these events do happen and we have additional money, um the additional money will be reallocated to um in the form of refunds for students because if we don't use the full amount due to the circumstances. Um and that includes if these things are canceled. Um that will be handled through the um I think root central office is the vehicle that that's handled. So parents can expect um communication on that um as soon as word gets out if anything's canceled.
Thank you. And um I just I just would say that I'm so thankful for your efforts in this planning because you know, the vast majority of North Andover does not have seniors graduating this year. But we do support our schools and and I know that there are a number of people in North Andover who have never missed a North Andover graduation since they've lived in town, whether it's twenty-five years or fifty years or whole lives. Um so I appreciate all that you're doing and please know that you are the pride of North Andover right now and we as a community will really enjoy the ceremonies and the events that you put together and supporting those. If I could, yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Um and if I could, I I know that the juniors have had, I mean, we always say that junior year is the big year, right? Um so I know that there's been um challenge and disruption and I know that, you know, all juniors show that we're in the same circumstances. So I just wanted to um take a Shakespeare play and you're left off. You're wondering, what could happen next? I mean, I mean, I know you're doing things online and virtually and remotely. Um but I do recognize this is a particularly tough time as well for juniors. So I just wanted to share that thought with you.
Mr. Tracy?
You hear me?
Now, now.
Okay, we were a little pause. Holly, did you want to ask anything to the students?
Nope, they've covered everything.
Thank you very much. Uh hey, thank you, everybody, for participating today. I really appreciate it and especially Jack uh for all the efforts um, you know, with this committee over the last, you know, couple of years and all the efforts you're putting into um making um what can only just be incredibly difficult time for all you you seniors. I really appreciate the time and effort that you put in. You're quite a young man and I think, um, you know, I know your parents are proud of you and I know this town is proud of you. So thank you very much for uh everything you've done for us.
And Jack, I echo that. This is Dr. Gilligan. Are you representing the seniors? What the best this North Andover has to offer? And I couldn't be more proud of a group um doing this work. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Can you hear us, Jack?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. I think we're all set.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, am I all set now? Am I good? Okay. Um I was remiss. I I did have another public comment that had come in prior to the seven o'clock um meeting start and I didn't realize it was a public comment. Sometimes we get emails that are not designated public comment, so I wasn't sure. But now I'm told it is for public comment. This is from David and Cheryl Barbato. So I want to just read this really quickly, folks, if that's okay. Um to the North Andover School Committee, my wife Cheryl and I have been residents of North Andover for over eighteen years. Cheryl graduated from North Andover High class of nineteen eighty-eight. We are business owners. Our company Talent Retriever relocated to the East Mills complex about four years ago, where approximately twenty-five of our forty-five employees come to work each week. Most importantly, we are the proud parents of two teenage daughters that each attend our thing of a high school. Ava is a freshman and Sophia is a member of this year's senior class. In addition to running Talent Retriever, I also chaired the board of a nonprofit housing families based in Malden that provides shelter and affordable housing to approximately two hundred families. We have a staff of over fifty people working each day to assist families in need. We understand the challenges that the town has faced in dealing with the challenges suddenly unexpectedly causing a complete disruption in our lives and changing all our normal activities. We have personally dealt with managing through these challenges with both our organizations. We run our business and our personal lives based on core values that we live by and hold ourselves accountable to. Core values provide a basis of how we act towards others, make decisions and work daily. North Andover schools promote a set of values called R A I S E from the time students are in elementary school. These values seem to have been disregarded by the administration in this district. Empathy and respect have been ignored in most all communication distributed by Principal Jackson and to the student to the student body and parents. We have seen amazing displays of leaders in education around the country as well as throughout the business world, stepping up to communicate strong messages that unify and lift up the spirits of those that have knocked down. Unfortunately, this has not been the case in our town. We have been underwhelmed by the move to online learning. We have heard excuses and for now have accepted them in hopes time would show improvement. We also held out hope that the town would rally around its senior class. We really had high expectation that our educational leaders would unite and use this as a way to bring the talent together to celebrate this class, a class that has learned to deal with challenges and disruption. We would hope those we trust to lead our children would step up and provide a true way to celebrate the many achievements of the class of twenty twenty. However, that that does not seem to be the case. We are now left with the results of a poorly done survey and an opportunity to get a picture alone in the gym. When we saw the survey, it was clear, based on the questions and options provided, it wouldn't yield the correct result set. There were too many random choices. Naturally, the votes the votes would be split and the options were misleading. The results of the survey showed that the most important thing to the students was being together. That result was completely disregarded. We would like to see actions taken and we work the end of year plan to make it a true celebration that recognizes this class in a dignified and respectful way. We look forward to your response. Thank you again, David and Cheryl Barbato. So I apologize for not reading that earlier. That that did come in as public comment. Okay, um moving on to our consent agenda, uh order of business is approval of minutes uh from April ninth uh twenty twenty. Um I would accept a motion to approve the motion, the minutes as they appear in the packet. Uh could I have such a motion?
So I'll move to approve minutes uh as presented in the packet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of April ninth uh twenty twenty. Motion made by Mr. McDebit, seconded by Amy Mabley. Um Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Amy, how do you vote? Helen, how do you vote? Helen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh Holly, how do you vote? Holly, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote uh yes as well. So that's five oh vote on April ninth. We also have a very brief uh April sixteenth twenty twenty uh meeting that was uh just a call to order then moved to executive session. Could I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So what?
Second.
Motion made by uh Andrew, seconded by Holly. Um Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Holly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that's a five oh vote as well. Okay, so both those minutes are approved. All right, um moving on to the superintendent's report. I know we had a couple of public comments about graduation and we obviously heard from Jack extensively about graduation. Uh Dr. Gilligan, will you kind of address that as well, please?
Yeah, so um first I want to acknowledge um that these are really challenging times. I think for this class in particular, uh last year they had the gas explosion. This fall, uh there were no night games for our athletes of the band competitions, uh including practices. Um and I think this was unimaginable just a few short months ago, um that we would be here. I would say that I'm really proud of the work the class of twenty twenty has done around uh preparing for graduation and celebrations uh in these challenging times. I know last Friday I was on the phone with twenty-five superintendents from the Merrimack Valley region and twenty-five principals. And um I think it's really important and I'm glad that the students and staff really believe in uh having something that weekend for in terms of closure. So um and then be able to move on and see what opens up later in the summer. Um some places are just uh trying to postpone till late in July or August with the hopes that they can get together uh in person. So I think that um a lot of work has gone into it. I think a couple of things I'm not sure if people could hear. Um but uh some of the folks that really play a key role, you know, the police, the town manager, public safety, uh Rick Gorman, Cam, uh the different parents uh on the subcommittee, the students. And I think um a couple of things. So the looking at a scholarship night um for Wednesday evening, an awards night uh Thursday, June fourth, the graduation at Friday, June fifth. And you know, I also want to acknowledge that this is um it it's a challenge. I think it's for our parents and for our kids and our seniors. Um this is not what uh any of us, I think, had wished or hoped for for the hundred and fiftieth graduating class from the North Andover Public Schools. And um I think it's important to acknowledge uh the feelings that come along with it, particularly it's it's a loss. It's a little bit of grieving. But I do know that um planning through this um for the graduation piece, uh a huge car parade um on Saturday throughout the community um with the help of, you know, the town manager, police, uh all the different folks. And then moving on to um, you know, a event at the high school on Friday, June twenty-fourth, and then a formal event at the Danversport Yacht Club on the twenty-fifth of July, July twenty-fourth and July twenty-fifth. Um so you know, it's uh I think not what anyone had imagined. I think it takes a lot of creativity. I think there's a lot more work to go into it. Uh and I'm appreciative of the folks who are willing uh to do that work and um recognize these kids because they deserve it and they deserve the best. Um so.
Uh thank you, David Gilligan. I I think you hit the nail on the head. Um no one ever would have thought this um, you know, two months ago. For what the seniors have to go through and, you know, uh we see Jack quite a bit, uh who was on a a few minutes ago. Um I mean, just the maturity level and the I I said that the effort that he's put into this. Um I just give him and his senior class just a lot of credit for um trying to make the best out of the worst situation. I mean, you think back on our our childhoods and the it's not just the graduation itself. It's the months leading up to graduation, all the the little things that make senior year special. And um I know, you know, there's, you know, three hundred plus graduates, so three hundred plus set of parents out there. There's just no way we can make them all happy. Unequiv- we can't make them happy. Um we've worked hard to do so. I mean, we learned about this, you know, officially last week pretty much. And um obviously, everything could have been done better. Um things could always be done better. But with that being said, under the circumstances, I I just think that trying to put together a committee and listening to different points of view, um again, I think they're making the best out of out of a terrible situation. Um I'm gonna ask um Ms. Mabley, I know, uh who also has a high school senior and has been involved in a little bit of the graduation uh planning to date, if she wants to make a couple of comments in regards to uh to Greg's uh um report.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Mr. Tracy. Um yes, I have a high school senior. Is she disappointed to hear it's going to be a virtual ceremony on the fifth? Um and and the the scholarship night and all that stuff will be virtual. Of course she is. Every single student is. All the parents are. Um but again, going back to the we all want to be together, which is what the students said. Um behind that, and I overheard this during some classes that have been held when teachers spend some time teaching, but they're also talking to them how they're feeling and doing. To get it, being all together is also about um not being able to meet friends that you're always gonna be friends with, but there are lots of kids that you take classes with that are not your friends. You don't spend time with them outside of class. That is a great loss that they're all feeling. Um but the other pieces is so so obviously, all of us wanted to see the normal graduation that we are used to. But the risk of putting that off to potentially July twenty-fifth and then have that not happen means that you've left kids with no closure for two months. And then nothing happens. So the idea of doing this virtual situation where a lot, it's gonna The idea of doing this virtual situation where, it's going to take 10 days to record all this. So that parents can be present, kids can hear their names, can hear their name as Jack said. They can get their diploma, they can wear their cap and gown, everyone can see them. Is at least one way to make sure they all get closure on that official day. And then if for some reason, in that July timeframe, we can do the prom, which is what's planned right now, and do other events, then there's another chance to gamble. And hold out for that, it didn't happen. Now there's no closure whatsoever. And that was a risk that we were not willing to take.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. I'll go down, I'll recognize people who wanted to talk about graduation first, so I'll do reverse order this time. Holly, do you want to talk about graduation? Any questions for Greg?
Not for Greg, but maybe Amy, since you're on the committee. How was the survey process conducted and determined?
So I was not part of the survey building, but what I understand is the survey was primarily driven and put together by the students. And they did then pull that information, look at it like Jack said, several hours, and they proposed some of the ideas. I have to say, again, there were 30 people, I think, on the committee, teachers, community members, parents, et cetera. And some people actually said that they were overwhelmed and they thought this was way more than they ever expected possible to be put together. Again, we all, nobody wants. But we're trying to meet what the kids want as best as possible. And the risk of waiting is just too great to do that only. I hope that answered your question.
Yep, I'm good.
Helen? For Greg or Amy?
I would just ask, you know, how long when this information is going to be communicated with the general public? Obviously tonight, but in addition.
Mr. Jackson put out a notice to all senior parents. I do think that there are a lot more details and I think in there there is an opportunity for folks to help and help coordinate to still work out over a month away. And we will get, we can get that out.
I think that will be really important for the whole community. Thank you.
Andrew?
I mean, I really appreciate the conversations with Jack and Mrs. Mabley, you know, you as well as the mother of a student. I think one of the things that you kind of just mentioned that was really important to hear was the ability for closure, right? And if we kind of said, you know, hey, that we're going to have this in, you know, July, it may happen, it may not happen, you know, but the students kind of had a strong opinion that they wanted graduation kind of in the traditional timeframe, which was early June, that's there. You know, I definitely have heard people say, you know, we could have pushed it back. You know, maybe we could have done it in July and, you know, yes, there'd be some kids who couldn't make it, but, you know, there's probably some kids who can't make it that weekend anyway. But I'm encouraged, initially I did not know that there were dates all throughout the summer that were proposed. And, you know, well, everybody might not get their first choice, you know. Looking at a June date is certainly very valuable and brings forward that closure. I think that that's certainly a milestone that we need to celebrate. And I think there's a lot of great things that are being done, are being planned. Who are planning some celebrations as well for the students. And I think all of that needs to be commended and we need to embrace all of it.
Thank you, Andrew. Greg, anything else on the superintendent's report tonight?
No, I would just echo those sentiments.
Senior finals and last day of classes?
Last day of senior classes will be the 29th, you know, and that's in the letter that went out to seniors.
Hello, I am Greg.
Can you hear me now, Helen?
Yes, sir.
Great. So in the letter, you know, it did explain last day of, for seniors is the 29th. And I just, I do commend everybody. I do, I am glad that in this community, they recognize the importance of that closure, particularly on that weekend. As I said, I am really pleased at the student input. And, you know, as we go forward here, I really want to thank the folks at the high school. I know, like I said, it's a challenge. It's a challenge to have a senior. It's a challenge for them. It's a challenge for their parents in the traditional way. And this may look different. And I know some folks may think that North Andover may have been slightly delayed in planning. You know, I know the other parts of the country and other people have done things. I think that their graduation dates are, they get out a lot earlier. They start a lot earlier in August in a lot of places. But we're very much in line locally and I think we're ahead. And I want to make sure that over the next month, we do everything we can to give them the best send-off possible. They deserve it the most and we will do everything in our power here from central office at the school level. There's parents doing wonderful things. I heard from Chair Trissey that, you know, that sounds like some folks in the community doing some things as well. And I think it's going to be a heck of a celebration and I think that there'll be more work. But, you know, Principal Jackson getting that survey out and sharing it with parents on Sunday for the students and being student-driven, I think is really important. I think their voice is critical in this. So I'm excited for them and I'm excited that there are other events. And back to someone's point about risking it and putting it off, there are a couple of districts that aren't doing anything on graduation weekend and they've pushed it to August. And that would concern me greatly because these guys deserve it.
I mean, right, May 29th is the last day, what are finals to do?
Yeah, so they typically be wrapping up on the 22nd with classes and finals that week, but with the remote learning. That week, there'll be some activities and some different things put together. They wrap up on the 29th and go from there.
Anything else on the superintendent's report, Greg?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Marx is not here tonight. She lost her dad last week. So she will be joining us next week. And I'm looking to do an update on remote learning. You know, and it is remote learning. It's not synonymous with online learning. It's been quite a challenge, but it's, we've made, I think, significant progress. I'm proud of the curriculum team, the teachers, the leaders, the parents. Let's just face it, folks, you know, parents are home with kids and 90% of our parents or more are not teachers. And to find, you know, things, do things in an asynchronous way because of everyone's schedule and personal schedules, it's a challenge. That said, I just really want to commend, you know, Food Services is doing 7,200 meals a week to our students and our seniors, citizens here in the community. We've given out, I think, 1,100 Chromebooks at this point. You know, there's a great infographic Hillary created for us in the first two weeks of remote learning. And I'd like to have some folks in next week to present on it because I think it's been pretty remarkable. I know that MIT came out with a report being promoted by the Commissioner of Education in Massachusetts, saying that Massachusetts Plan is rated the second best in the United States. And I know it does look a lot different than some places like New Hampshire or Rhode Island. I think a lot of thought went into it. And last but not least, I would say this, that someone had mentioned in the public comment, David, about, you know, moving forward for next year. And of course, the, you know, it's something that we're thinking about actively, planning for. It may look different. The commissioner and the state has given us some prerequisite content standards that are very critical for kids to move forward between, you know, cover for our teachers to cover and kids to move forward next year to the following grades. But we realize that we'll have to take a baseline. We may have to make some adjustments and some adapting. But I know we can do it and I look forward to it.
Thank you, Greg. Quickly on my chair's report, just want to remind people that the election, town election was rescheduled to June 2nd. The town is encouraging folks to vote by mail. It takes up to three weeks usually for them to process that. So please visit the town website and you can request a ballot. I think that's what it says here. Helen, can I just ask you really quickly to bring up the Education Hall of Fame?
Yes, you can. So our deadline is today and I was informed. You can't hear me?
Now I can. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, our deadline was today and we've been informed by at least three folks that they're planning to nominate. So I think that if one, two, or three of those who said they're planning to nominate follow through with all the paperwork, I feel like they've started the process by letting us know both the name of the person that they're planning to nominate and that they're pulling together packets. I feel like we can probably go forward with that at this point, this year. If they don't follow through, we can come back and have a conversation with committee and see if we might want to extend the deadline. But it would be great if all three of those came through with packets.
Okay. Thank you, Helen. Moving on to old business, it says first reading discussion of the 2019-2020 calendar. People recall correctly, at our last meeting on the ninth, we voted to cancel school vacation and we said we'd address it after the state made a decision whether we were going to have classes start on May 4th again. Obviously, since then, the governor has ruled that we will not be going back to school. So the way I understand it as of right now, if we take no action, we will be getting out of school on June 15th. That is correct, Dr. Gilligan?
Correct.
Okay. So I wanted to put this on the calendar if there was any discussion, if people wanted to weigh in on it or not. But otherwise, we can move on to the other business. I'm sorry, I'll go down the other way now. Mr. McDebit, do you have anything you want to add to that or are you good?
Sorry, I'll say, that was on you.
Amy?
I don't know if I, I'm just discussing about the school calendar or we just reiterating what you're saying.
I'm having a tough time hearing you too and I guess I probably, I don't know what's being seen by people at home if they're watching. There's a big echo and I can't hear anything all the time, but I just asked, I put this on the agenda because I know the last time we met, we talked about when we found out whether May 4th was real or not, we would address it again. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that right now, but we are scheduled to get out on June 15th unless there's action taken.
So just to clarify, what you're saying is the four days of vacation that we decided to work through. We would, we're not looking to reschedule those, we're just going to get out on the 15th, June. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. This is just a discussion. We're not going to take a vote today, just looking, again, I put it on the agenda because I said we would put it on the agenda after we took the vote last time. So if there's no comment, that's fine. There doesn't need to be a comment.
Can you hear, can you hear what I'm saying?
Yes, I can.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, Amy.
Okay. So I just was asking, is that what we're not discussing is the four vacation days that we worked through? And that we have it right now that we discuss with the June 15th, getting out of school. Is that correct?
Getting out of school on June 15th, yes. I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing the question.
I think you're invited, I think you're invited to have comments on that. This is the time for discussion if you have thoughts or comments or information you want to add to the committee.
Okay, so all I would like to is we took away four vacation days. And so I'm curious to know how the teachers feel about that, you know, working through that and not taking vacation day around Memorial Day, which is something I had mentioned before. Are they great with that or would they rather have a little bit of a break? I'm just curious to hear if they have anything to add to this.
Okay, okay. Ms. Lunch?
I'm in the same position as Amy. So, so we're saying that we're okay with it, which I am.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's really difficult to understand what you guys are saying. But I think the question was, how do the teachers feel about this? Okay, so we can find that out for sure, definitely. But I mean, do you have anything to add yourselves? Forget what the, this is just, we're not taking a vote tonight. I just put it on the calendar to have a discussion. So the answer, you just want to know how the teachers feel about, is that what I'm hearing?
And, yes, so Amy, this is back to Amy. I would like to hear how the teachers are feeling and then if any public comment comes in that people say their kids are desperate for a break, would rather have two vacation days and then go to school two days longer in June, I mean, I would just be interested if anybody had any commentary on that.
Okay, thank you. Helen?
Yes. I continue to be concerned that getting out on June 15th, which is a Monday, after the Friday when there are no official classes, that concerns me. I'm also interested in what the teachers may have to say about this. But I did also go back through the public comment that we had last time. And this, this may not be exact, but about half the people who asked to have April vacation canceled specifically said that they had the desire to end early in June. I think there were about 22 comments on that and I think about nine of them commented specifically that they wanted to get out early in June. So I think we have heard from the public to some degree. I also feel from the conversations that I've had, that when we did not set an end date, most people have assumed that we're done on June 15th. And so to reopen this, I think, would be painful and difficult because we're not all going to land on the same idea. So at this point, I think I would be in favor of ending on the 15th, though it continues to concern me.
Okay. So I apologize. It's been very difficult to hear what you said. And Helen, that last thing was a lot of echo. Have them speak slow. Getting a lot of tips. At this point, the indication from the teachers is that they would prefer to work through to June 15th and that's it. To date, I have received no public comment since this was posted regarding this. I read all the public comment that I received for this week's agenda. So nothing new. I think Helen makes a good point that some of the public comment that was submitted two weeks ago indicated a desire to work right through. So that's where we're at right now. We don't need to take any action if we are going to get out, if, we're going to get out on June 15th. So there's no action to be taken. I just made a commitment last time to have this conversation. So I'm not looking for a motion unless someone wants to put one on the floor. I'm content with just leaving it as is. But just five of us. Go ahead, Helen.
Does that mean it will or will not be on our agenda next week for second reading? In other words, are we inviting further public comments?
I would say that if people are at home, they say first reading, yes, I would. And we'll see what public comment comes in and if people like yourselves have different opinions the next week. Yeah, so yes, the answer is yes. It would be on the agenda for next week for our second reading. But we do not necessarily have to take a vote if we're going to stay as is.
Thank you.
And I'm really sorry, guys, it's tough to hear you guys.
Huge and hopefully you can hear me okay. We took four days off from the April vacation and we were scheduled to go on the 19th. Doesn't that automatically imply that we would be out on June 15th? So isn't that our current last date? What precedent do we have to kind of then just add on more days? I'm not sure what I, why does a vote? Why is it delayed?
So I would just say, Andrew, that the school committee does have to stay typically, you guys set the last day right around this time most likely because of snow days and the time we've had off. And I know that David's getting feedback from the teachers, which is great, and other feedback. So it would be great to just officially take all that information and to set a last day so it's official.
I really couldn't hear Andrew's question at all, so. One more time?
We've never voted on that in the past.
We never voted to cancel April vacation to my recollection either. So again, this is put on the agenda because we made a commitment to do so. If we do nothing, we're fine. We don't need to take any votes if we don't want to take a vote next week at all. But as it stands, June 15th will be our last day. But as it stands, June fifteenth will be our last day, June fifteen will be our last day unless we take some action. We good now?
There would need to be a motion, and I would assume for it to be something else, otherwise, there is no conversation next week.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, can I ask you this, and Tracy, is there a motion that we have a different end of school?
No, I don't want, it's up to the members, it's, it, it's up to you guys. If you guys are content, and I think I heard Holly and Amy say that they wanted to know how the teachers felt, and I told you, they would rather just work right through it from what they've told me to date. Okay, so if that's good enough, I would say there's no action that needs to be taken. But, uh, to Helen's point, I, we gotta have two readings of it. So, it's an awkward situation, I would just say, let's try not to get too focused on the rules. I'm gonna have some agenda next week, and if we take no action, we take no action. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
New business. Uh, first reading town meeting warrant article recommendations, uh, these are due May nineteenth. Uh, Dr. Gilligan, or Mr. Mealy, are these just the standard ones we've always had in the past?
Yep, they're the standard ones, and if you click on the link, uh, it's the first reading, uh, with a meeting next week. We have the ability to, um, have, this is the first reading and the second reading. And it's town meeting warrant articles two, three, four, and twenty-four. And the reason, um, for this is because it needs to get into the book to be printed, um, by that, by the deadline, I believe, of May nineteenth. And, um, I think this year more than ever, I think a printed book may come in handy.
So, these are always, uh, Article two and Article three. Um, Article two is authorizing the town manager superintendent, uh, regarding contracts in excess of three years. And Article three is to authorize acceptance of grants of easements. Those ones we always do in the past, correct? And?
Correct.
Jim, how about Article twenty-four? Is that one as specific this year?
That's, uh, regarding the, um, Medicaid funding?
Yep.
The mechanism for putting the money in, so that one's correct.
Okay. So this is the first reading, any questions? I'll go down the line again, um, I'll reverse order. Holly, do you have any questions regarding these three, uh, articles? Um, again, two and three are ones we do every single year. Um, and Article twenty-four, I think it's pretty straightforward, but any questions regarding those three, three, um, articles?
I have no questions.
Uh, Andrew, do you have any questions on those three articles?
No questions.
No questions.
Amy?
Amy?
I do not have any questions.
And Helen?
No questions.
I think you're echoing on purpose now. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so we'll have those for a final vote next week for our recommendations on that. Um, all right, policy updates. Uh, who's gonna take this, Greg or Amy, do you want to tee this up?
We can't hear you, Ms. Mabley, you've been working very hard, I know, on policy updates and?
I needed to get my microphone turned off, but I'd already gone to the page, so hold on one second.
Yep. And I, Ms. Mabley, as always, does a great job with policy revisions as things come in from the state and the MASC. And she's done a nice job working with Suzanne Egan, Town Council on this.
All right, so, this is a series of policy updates. Um, and what happens is on a regular basis, the Mass Association of School Committees themselves goes through various policies. They make some minor adjustments, et cetera, sometimes bigger adjustments to policies that we can then look at and decide whether or not we want to engage with. And so what you have in your packet are some, um, line-edited options that include what the MASC has proposed as some changes. Most of the ones in this set are pretty basic, except for the first one. Um, and so I'd like to introduce the first one for some discussion in particular, which is public participation at school committee meetings. The green line wording here is again the MASC wording. Um, and I guess I should make a caveat that this has nothing to do with the way we're doing public comment in this COVID-19 world. This is when we get back to normal, when people are in our meeting, we're all physically together, um, how it would work. Um, I'd like to draw my colleagues' attention to point number one on the first page, where it introduces that, um, individuals who are interested in making public comment would have to come in and sign in and write their name on a list in advance before they could, um, comment. Um, obviously, I want you to look at all of this, but I want you to look at that in particular because I personally would not like to introduce this change. I think people, um, are nervous enough trying to come in and make public comment. And putting a barrier that they have to come and write their name down, um, might make them feel uncomfortable. I'd, I'd, I think, I think it goes against encouraging people to participate. So I personally would not like to have the, the write-in part, and particularly since we have two stages of public comment. But I obviously defer to the conversation. That's the part I want to?
Um, our turn now, I guess? So, um, Helen, do you want to comment on that? I, I personally would agree with Ms. Mabley, I, I think, um, there's no legal reason to put in a, a, a sign-in sheet to speak um, at all or to attend a public meeting of people, the public wants to come. Um, I just think they should be able to state, state their name, that's it. But Helen, you want to go?
Um, yeah, I would say there are times when we have people coming for public comment later, and we have public comment at the end as well. Um, so someone may want to stand up or, you know, come forward at the end. Um, maybe they've been watching at home, and then they want to come in and speak. So, I would, I would generally agree with Ms. Mabley on the chair. It, it also concerns me that we put in writing that it shall not exceed fifteen minutes. There have been times when there have been a number of comments, and we've, we've had the opportunity to cut off at fifteen minutes or to continue if it seemed reasonable.
So you would, you would want to strike the fifteen minutes part two, Helen?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I said you would want to strike the fifteen minutes section as well?
Yeah, I like the prior language.
Okay. Any other comments on this policy, Helen?
Not at this time, sir.
Uh, Andrew, do you have any comments on this policy?
Not right now, thank you, though.
Uh, Holly, do you have any comments on this policy right now?
Uh, the only thing, I agree, the only thing I would add is I do not think it's necessary to have to sign in to our meetings. I mean, they're relatively informal.
Okay, um, so I, I think the majority of us, um, see, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to sign in during public comment. And I feel the same way Helen does, if public comment runs a half hour, forty-five minutes, then, you know, the public deserves to be, be heard. I think we have these guidelines, and I think it's important to be flexible depending on the topic and the, you know, the subject matter that we're, we're dealing with. So, um, I'd be in favor of striking up both those parts. Amy, you want to, you want to tackle anything else on this policy?
Um, well, I just want to clarify that I will, um, make these notes and work with Ms. Gary to, uh, make some edits for us to consider as a final. Um, and to point out what, what you, Helen and David have both just said, um, there are lots of places where we said it's at the discretion of the chair to extend, et cetera. And I think if we keep those things in place, we care of, um, handling any, um, time limits if they become too much of a problem.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think whoever is sitting in the chair with the gavel has a responsibility to be, to keep the moving, to keep the meeting moving. Um, and obviously, if the comments are, you know, disrespectful or personal attacks, I mean, I think we had a couple of comments tonight that were pointed, but people put their names to them. I thought they were relatively, uh, respectful, and that we might have disagreed with them. I think it's important that we still hear those points of view as long as they're done in a, a respectful, uh, way. So, good.
So if there's nothing else on the B-E-H-D-H, um, if we can move on to the next one, which is IC, school year slash school calendar. Um, this is here mostly because, um, from our discussion a few weeks ago, it says here that, um, May first, the decision will be made by May first. I believe that we had some discussion that May first feels kind of late. Um, the language change here is annually, I don't know if we want to be more specific to earlier or leave it annually and change our procedures, but, um, this is the, uh, main thing I think to discuss here is the date. And then the other changes are very minor, um, wording changed by MASC as well. So I defer to the discussion.
Amy, I apologize, because again, it's really tough to pick up everything you're saying. Are you asking for, are you making a recommendation to put a date in there besides May first? Are you just gonna leave it annually, um, or are you looking to get the temperature of the committee?
I would like the committee to discuss whether we should have an earlier date.
Okay.
Or if, if we leave it annually and we decide amongst ourselves in our procedures to make it earlier.
Okay. Um, Helen, you want to go first?
Certainly. It would concern me to take out the date of May first and not replace it. If it only says annually, that allows us to make that decision by June first or July first. So that concerns me. Additionally, we talked about perhaps doing this in the fall, in October or November. My concern, given that we are in the situation of COVID-19, and presumably there will be some carryover in the fall for how we're operating, we may want to have a longer timeframe in which to make our decision about the school calendar. So, it's important to me that we have a date in there and not just annually.
Okay, okay. Uh, Holly?
Uh, I'm okay with date or no date. I would agree that May first is late, so if we were to put a date in, I would prefer an earlier one.
Andrew?
I, I would agree, I think that's too late for families in our community to be planning summers and things of that nature. So, I would recommend if we do have something that it is earlier. Um, I would say, uh, as part of negotiations with teachers' union, you know, that third year of our contract, we are negotiating the following year, um, you know, there is some timing issues with that as well. So, earlier I think we have it, uh, I think it is better for the entire community, family, and, uh, uh, teachers and faculty as well.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Gilligan, does the administration have any feelings about when the best? I mean, historically, I think we've always done this late February, early March. We might have been a week or two later this year. Um, but how do you feel about this? Do you guys have a position on this right now?
Yeah, I mean, I, I actually didn't even know that it said May first, to be honest. Uh, I was surprised when we were looking at the policy that it did say May first. Um, uh, you know, I would be happy with, uh, April first. Moving it back a month, I think, would maybe a good idea. Um, and typically, I think, you know, I'm not sure why it was May first, there may have been a good reason years back, or maybe that's just what the boilerplate is from other, you know, MASC. But, um, I think our practice has been to get it out early, and this year it was, uh, some challenges, but?
Yeah, there was a challenge because of the, the late day of Labor Day. Do you see, if we put March first as a date in here, do you, can you anticipate any issues we would have at March first?
I don't know, I think that that's something to think about since this is a first read, um, and I'd talk about it, but I, I don't anticipate that would be an issue.
Okay. Okay, we can think about that more, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We were already in trouble by April first. So, if we're backing it up, I would think it would need to be March first. And if we were making decisions by March first, I think we would really need to make decisions or try to make decisions in January so that we don't have delayed decisions because of snow.
Right. Well, this is a, this is a first reading, so obviously, I mean, I, I think March first is a reasonable date. Um, any other, Amy, do you want to weigh in? This is your ballgame.
Yeah, uh, so what I was going to say is I believe that the annually is probably the boilerplate from MASC. And the May first was a North Andover specification, which is good, that's specified. But I was gonna suggest February first, so, um, because I think that's when people start planning and investing in their summer and in their daycare plans, so, um, that, that would be something I would put out there, and then we would need to consider the concerns around that.
Yep.
Very good, Amy.
I, I think earlier the better, and I think just thinking about why that May first date was there, and are there any unintended consequences for moving it back so early? But I think the earlier we can do it, the better.
Yeah. Why don't we do this, why don't, Greg, for next week, we're gonna meet next week to set, to finalize this policy. Could you like, just try to figure out if there's any issues with February first or with March first? I think, you know, the sooner is better for all of us. Um, I know, you know, January, we're dealing with the budget quite a bit. Um, but I, I can't see why March first wouldn't be an, be an issue. But why don't you give a recommendation next week, and we'll plug it in there, okay?
Mm-hmm.
People good with that? All right, uh, Amy, next one.
Okay. The next one is the school day. Uh, this came straight from MASC, this is an update that they proposed about, um, the carding green there, so I don't really have any commentary on that. This has been our practice, I believe, and Dr. Gilligan can speak to this. That the, all the schools always say when the students are welcome on campus, by what time they can get dropped off, especially elementary schools that will not be dropped off before a certain time because no one's there to watch them on the playground. And I think this is part of formalizing that from MASC.
Yep, and that's a weak.
Published that, so.
Um, Andrew, do you have any questions on this one? Andrew?
Andrew?
No, no, I can't tell, do you see me? Can't hear me?
Sorry, it was on you.
So no? All right, Holly?
No.
Helen?
Helen?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Amy, next one?
Next one is IGB services, and then again here, this is just, um, cleaning up of language, uh, from the MASC. And in some cases, the, the names that we have for people's jobs, like, um, this is superintendent for teaching and learning. It's just, uh, and a little bit of clarification on, um, who it covers. But again, this is straight MASC updates, I don't have a lot to comment on here.
Okay, Greg, you want to add anything before we move to questions?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Helen, any, any questions on this one?
No, no.
You can't, you can't.
No?
Okay, I'm sorry, Holly?
No, no.
Andrew?
Nope.
I hate this. Not you guys, I hate, that guy was killing me. Uh, Amy, okay, that's, uh, IGB, and I think you have one more?
Yes, for the last one, it's the same situation, tiny language changes, nothing substantial. Um, just wanting to revisit it while it's here, and, um, that's all I have.
Yeah, just a couple of small word changes here. Um, I gotta ask, Helen?
No.
Holly?
Just a minor question, Amy, why are we picking it? And I know you appreciate this as a, hello, merian, why are we changing it from singular to plural? Why are we changing it from singular to plural? But not changing the antecedent.
I actually did not read it because it was to that level of detail. I think it came lifted up from the grammatical skills of the MASC, but I can work with that grammar.
Thanks.
Holly, I think I can speak to that, which is that the gender neutral singular there is now grammatically acceptable.
Okay.
Andrew?
No questions.
Thank you. Any thoughts, Ms. Mably, on these?
No, thank you, sir.
No, thank you, Amy, for all your work, seriously. I know the policies can be pretty dry sometimes and we appreciate your efforts taking up all the policy stuff. So I think we obviously will have a second reading of these next week. The only takeaway would be for the administration to take a look at that date on IC. Okay, Greg? And then we can finalize that next week?
Yes.
And I think Bev heard us pretty clearly on B E D H about not signing in and no time limit on public comment. Okay. Greg, first reading, school choice, 2021 school year?
Yeah, so annually, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that school committees, after holding a public hearing, consider whether the district will participate as a receiving district in school choice. This is something that North Andover has never participated in. And the superintendent's recommending that we do not participate. This is a first reading. We do have to hold the public hearing. There's typically not been a lot of interest in the school choice because we're trying to keep our class sizes low. So having kids tuitioning in from other districts is not, would not be helpful to us. That said, during this COVID-19 pandemic, I just want to get some clarity from Bev on, she had to post with the newspaper 10 days prior to the hearing. And I just want to make sure that we get the hearing. We don't need a decision until June 1st. If it timed out right, the public hearing could be the next meeting, but it might be the following. And I have to hear back from Bev.
This will be on the agenda, the May 7th or May 21st. We'll have the public hearing and we will vote on the same date, okay? So it'll be May 7th or May 21st for that public hearing. Okay. Last item on the agenda, Dr. Millie. First reading requests to suspend rules to approve the transportation contract amendment.
Yes, so this is a change from the original plan. As the members recall, there were discussions going on between a few groups and our transportation company. And there was direction from the governor that encouraged us to pay both at a district tuition, schools, and the transportation vendor. So we had originally prepared an MOU after negotiations by local superintendent groups and local business manager groups that resulted in the terms that you see in the contract. And we were going to move forward with an MOU. But upon a decision finally coming from the Department of Revenue, which stipulated that services that are not rented cannot be paid for, in working with Suzanne Egan, and getting approval from DOR for this approach, it has to be an amendment to the contract that changes the services we're receiving. So what we are now receiving is that our drivers will continue to be paid by our vendor and available. And the transportation services are available if need be. So for instance, if we wanted them to deliver meals or if we wanted them to deliver school supplies or something like that, they'd be available to do so. So now the motion that we need would be to approve, first to suspend the rules, but the vote would be to support the superintendent in finalizing an amendment to the contract with NRT.
Okay, so first, can we, before we get to the substance, can I get a motion to suspend the rules to take this up and vote on it tonight, please?
That we suspend the rules?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Holly, seconded by Andrew to suspend the rules to take this up. Holly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Helen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes, yes.
It's like they're voting twice. And I vote yes as well, okay? So we're going to suspend the rules. Okay, the rules are suspended. Jim, do we have the exact motion for this? Do we need, is this empowering you or are we actually voting on the actual?
It's actually, it would have been an official vote, but now it's a vote to support the superintendent to allow him to finalize an amendment with the, with NRT for the transportation contract.
Okay. Do people have questions about what that is and the vote in front of us before we take it? Amy, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Holly?
No.
Helen?
Yes.
What's the question?
My question is, we just went over the town meeting warrant that we give the superintendent authority to make these contracts. And so I would like to know the rationale of why school committee is being asked to vote on a contract that the superintendent would normally do.
To that, in these discussions with local superintendents and business directors, this has been a really hot item that's generated a lot of interest. And as an MOU, it would have required a vote. And I do know that there are other communities that have a charter where they also have the authority to amend a contract. And I think that this is one that I'd be looking for a superintendent because this is a very unusual situation. The support of the committee in signing this.
Thank you. And then I would suggest or ask if perhaps we might want to use the buses to pick up seniors and their families to go to the high school for their graduation opportunity. And if we would ask the buses to participate in the senior parade, those seem like good uses of time and money to me.
Yeah, if it's deemed the best plan.
Interesting, I never thought about that. That's a good idea. Holly, I mean, I'm sorry, Helen? Andrew, any questions for you?
So my only question is, will we see this before you executed it, Dr. Gilligan?
I didn't hear you, Andrew. Can you say that again?
Will we see this before you execute it?
Will we see it before you execute it?
Oh, you're seeing it now.
It's what you see, or what was sent earlier today.
Okay. It's on the agenda, Andrew.
Yep, I thought you mentioned that it was different from what's there. So that, thank you.
No, what you see is what would be executed. Originally, it didn't have that first part which stipulates the change in services.
I do know in Andover, they just voted tonight, so.
I'm sorry, Andrew, do you have any questions on that? You're voting on this tonight. We suspended the rules. It's part of the agenda.
I'm sure what I was looking at was the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, I take a motion to approve the, as it's presented in the packet?
So moved, so moved.
Do I have a second? Second? Second?
Second. Second.
You guys aren't getting the kind of feedback we're getting here. It's pretty weird. I apologize. Helen made the motion, Andrew seconded the motion. Helen, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Amy, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Holly, how do you vote?
I just have a question. Are we voting to approve? Are we voting to allow, ready to approve it? Approve it? I'm yes either way. I just wanted to be clear.
Right. It's so the superintendent can sign it. So the superintendent can sign it. That's what we're approving.
Okay. Yes.
I'm sorry, Holly? She said yes. And I vote yes, so that's 5-0. Folks, I really apologize. It's really tough to hear you in this incredible echo.
Episode of Grand Canyon.
Okay, so that, we suspend the rules 5-0 and we approve that 5-0 as well. Okay, I would now, well, we have public comment at the end of the meeting. But does anyone on the board have anything for the public right now? Amy, do you have anything for the public? Amy?
Yeah, so I just want to thank everyone for sending in public comment and reiterate that this is a very difficult and challenging time. And I know that people are suffering and feeling badly for their seniors and their fifth graders and their eighth graders and their kindergartners and these, you know, uncertain times. And the people with seniors, they're also having to consider whether they defer college. They're having to consider how things are going to potentially go or not go in the fall. People are very stressed. And I just want to also, a lot of people mentioned raise values today in their comments. I'd like to also mention that the raised values go in all directions. And I think that parents are having a hard time, kids are having a hard time with this grieving process, as Dr. Gilligan said. The teachers and the administrators are also working extremely hard to do the best they can to come up with the best solutions. And so I would like to thank you for that.
Thank you, Amy. Andrew, any comment? Public comment?
I think I've asked most of mine already, but thank you. And I've seen a lot of amazing North Andover community support over the past couple of weeks. And it just makes me proud to be part of this community. Thank you.
Holly?
I echo what everybody else said. A lot of hard work is going on by everybody and I appreciate all of it.
You literally do echo what everyone else has said. Helen?
Yeah, I would just mention that the May pack is providing parent chat times once or twice a week. It's a nice offering. There's many supports that the community is offering for those who are struggling. But that was one that I just wanted to highlight. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, I would take a motion to adjourn regular session to return to executive session, which we recessed earlier, and not return to regular session. Could I have a motion? Helen?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Helen, seconded by Holly to adjourn, to go into executive session and not return to regular session. Helen, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Holly, do you vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes, yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We are adjourned. Thank you, Rody, for your patience. I know it wasn't easy, but I really appreciate it. Thank you.